We're all sort of looking.
It's underway.
All right, we're going to start, we're going to open the meeting. Let us, let us open the meeting, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good morning.
And a cheerful good morning to you all.
Oh, yes. Seeing that there is no public here yet, I think there will be no comments from the public, and I believe that, that we will just start our.
Would you like to have, when did we make our call? We didn't talk about things that we did this week.
That would be, that would be, I would, I would love to hear what you've done this week, unless, Mark, you have something you want to bring around?
No, I think that's a good thing to start with.
Yes, please do.
Of course, we had the, we did all of that together.
What did we do together?
The strategic plan.
Yes, we did.
See, yesterday, we, I think, there was a memorial service that we were planning to invite.
There was a memorial service which I was unable to make, I have to send for them.
Yesterday, the Workforce Investment Board annual meeting took place, at which time we heard from Michael Taylor at the state, who, does he know your first name is Sheila?
He does know my first name is Sheila, but we were talking about my friend Mary Me right before, ahead of time, so he got up there and mixed the two of us together and called me Mary Rafferty, who is now Mary, and then he called me Sheila later, if you heard him, you know, in the conversation, but it was because we had just discussed Mary that, that second said, and I, I was not going to correct him.
I'm certainly interested in having him put some flesh on those hints that he set up stories that he knew about his past.
Well, the fact is, you see, I know, I know Michael as much as he knows me, so it goes both ways.
Always good. After the, after the workforce investment board went to the annual dedication, what would be, Ms. Highway, and that was well attended, that, I think, three of the, I saw at least three of the Cape Cod delegation there and president, and the senate president, and she spoke about, you know, her, her daughter and the daughter of, true, I don't know how it had to go enough together, it was really sad.
It was very sad.
And what made it sadder was that Engel had been killed, been hit by a gull trail eight months previous, and was, had recovered, and was back on duty, and then, and then this happened, just awful.
It was terrible.
But exit seven now bears her name, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And then, I had my housing authority meeting, but you're certainly not interested in that. Okay.
I can talk about last Wednesday evening, there was a listening session that was held by the state, by the governor, it's actually one of his listening sessions, on the use of state land for the development of wind turbines.
Yes.
And there were six state commissioners there from Energy and the Environment and Public Safety, and it was very well attended, it was at Mass, as I said, it was at Mass Martime in the auditorium, and it was full. It lasted about two hours, there were a number of nonprofits who testified, Clean Power Now, some of the local groups, that are very, that are very interested in, in wind energy and also supportive to the wind farm, and spoke, in many cases, I think, very favorably toward the use of state land, but some who were there spoke about the, the fact that there should not be local control over these projects, and, and that was mostly because they felt that there were town boards and committees who denied, who would, who have denied, what they consider to be really good energy projects in the past, and they saw this as, as something that could really inhibit the building of wind turbines if local control. So I never really intended to testify, but after I heard a lot of the comments, I, I felt an urgent need to do so. So at the very end, when the moderator asked if there was anyone else who wanted to speak, I raised my hand, and, and I did speak about the need for local control, and I felt if there were, if there was a lot of citizen or adversarial views on the part of citizens, the best way to prevent that, or to encourage citizen support, is to have public meetings with citizens, and to have local boards be involved, and if the towns did more in the way of citizen education in the area of energy and its importance to the towns, that perhaps the boards and committees wouldn't be so negative toward the, for, toward development of this kind. And, and I also spoke about the fact that criteria would be needed by the state, because if they had dueling proposals, for instance, if you had a private developer making a proposal for a wind turbine, and you had a public entity making a similar proposal, then how would the state determine which one would be awarded the development? And that there should, they should have some criteria as to what they should be, but even better yet, there should be public-private partnerships, and that if the public worked with the developer, then you would have support from the ground up, and then you wouldn't even have all these adversarial views, I would think, I mean, at least it would help to, to minimize that. And then the other piece I spoke about was, was our issue with the state on the Green Communities Act, and I said that if, that, that the state would certainly want these projects to have regional impact, and if there is regional impact, that that means the towns are, are the beneficiary of these projects, and when they are, they should get credit toward their designation as a green community, and that they need to work on that anyway. So those were specifically my comments, but I thought, I think the, it was very well received, and I think there was probably overwhelming support for the use of state land for these wind projects.
I wanted to add one thing, that, that the Secretary of the Interior and Secretary of Energy had both said that they wanted to reduce the amount of local interference, they used the word interference, with the, you know, with the citing of land-based, you know, is it so-called alternate energy?
Contract.
And I took great exception to that, because if, if you were going to accept a project, you know, you need to have some idea that you're participating in the project, and it's not just imposed on you.
Exactly, well, that was my biggest issue, was the, the need for local control, and it isn't so much control, it's, it's the fact that the citizens in these communities have to be able to participate in decisions that affect them, they want to, and I think we should give them the opportunity to do that, and whether it's through boards and committees, or through ground-up partnerships, whatever it is, there has to be some kind of local input and control, so.
If I, if I may add to that conversation, and also tell something that I did this, this week, I, I attended, was it Tuesday evening, the, there was a discussion around stretch codes, which is going to be the new codes, building codes being implemented across the state as of January 2010, and they're in compliance with the IECC, which is the Energy, I don't have the notes in front of me, I have copious notes.
International Consortium of Energy Industries.
Say that again, say.
I see AAA is the International Consortium of Energy and something engineers.
Right, and they are trying to adopt international codes, which will, I guess, enable much cross, my assumption is that we'll be able to import certain products, and that, you know, things will be standardized on a global reach. There, those codes, those are called, you know, the, the new building codes, and those are going to be in, so each, there, there's towns that have no, there's, there's no discussion, this is all going to change January 1st, and they goes into law by January 1st, it all has to be put into place by July 1st of 2010. Now, in addition to that, there are these codes called stretch codes, and stretch codes are even more stringent green codes for building, and the towns, they're encouraging towns to adopt these green codes so that, or these stretch codes, so that, in that, that would be a piece of, of the criteria that would enable them to be a green community, and so there were many, many builders in this room, it was at the Wacoit Center in Falmouth, and I had just heard about it that day, because they had Megan Amsler from Self-Reliance on Mindy Todd, and she mentioned it. So it was Ian Finlayson, who is with the Department of Energy, and he is now their senior analyst, climate analyst, policy, senior analyst on climate policy, and he's a very nice guy, I met him last year, and a very bright guy, and so the discussion of the green communities, the regional reach of green communities, because there were people in the audience that understood that they were not, they're towns, and that there was going to be obstacles to the towns on the Cape in being able to meet the criteria. So the Secretary of Energy, Secretary Bowles, and speaking to him, and, you know, several of our, some legislators on the, on the Hill, feel that that is, there will be exemptions for those towns, but they have to show a good faith effort, and by showing a good faith effort, you have to expend money, time, manpower, you have to get your land use studies done, you have to do a lot of different work, that the town, that will be costly to the towns, it will be costly in manpower, many of which are boards, and what they think they can do on this legislation is bypass town meeting. They said that we're going to put the authority to the boards of selectmen, and the mayors, or whoever that body is, and of that particular municipality, and I said, I think that by home chatter and home ordinance, home rule, you have to have, these things have to go through town meeting, if I, I don't know if you can just set up that you're going to bypass people's town meeting. The state seems to think different of that, so that's going to be something that will be interesting.
Well, they did pass intermunicipal agreements.
Yes.
And they did, and they bypassed town meeting on that, because up, up until they, the state passed that legislation, you had to go through town meeting in order to make an agreement with, you know, with another town.
That's correct, you're right, I stand corrected.
So they have a precedent that makes support that.
That's, that's right, that's right.
If I may, someone to clarify, I understand what you're saying, are you saying that the state implied that to adopt the stretch building code, you don't have to go to town meeting?
Right, you just have to have a public meeting, and then the, the decision lies on the governing board, so that either be a selectman, board of selectmen, governor, city, city council, mayor, not the governor, mayor, or town manager, whoever is the final decide, decision maker of that town.
Well, usually if it's codes and bylaws, it depends, they can be adopted by selectmen rather than town meeting, usually town meeting is more involved with anything that has to do with appropriations.
With the money.
Or certain other pieces of legislation, like a home rule.
Well, this will.
If it's a bylaw, it can be done by a board of selectmen.
But this is accepting more stringent building codes for the entire town, so anything that is built, and this is residential and commercial. So this gentleman was surprised to hear that, you know, and, and so the green communities did come up, from people who are on energy boards, particularly Sandwich, the woman from Sandwich brought up very good points in support of county efforts, and she was talking about how this is not going to be able to be met, and it is going to be costly, and, and he said, I've heard about this effort, I'm aware of the effort down on the Cape trying to do a regional Green Communities Act, he personally feels that, you know, Massachusetts is a small state, and the towns are even smaller, and for towns to get together to help regionalize efforts, and, and obtain something they might not be able to do on their own makes sense, which is what the state wants us to do. So we did have a discussion on that, I was able to say that, under the regional policy, policy plan that was adopted, that we have the more, we have a more stringent energy plan in place for a commercial building, over 10,000 square feet, where they has to be 10% alternate energy generated on site, and that the web building just went through all of that, all of that criteria, and found it to be much easier because of the help of the Cape Light Compact, and various agencies and rebates that are available, so this was...
I have a question, can I, what, maybe you said this in the beginning, what is, why is it called a stretch code?
Because now you're taking the code that's going to be implemented, and that's mandatory, and you're going to stretch them to be even further, to be even more.
Inclusive?
Yeah, it's just a little name for it.
Just a history here, background, many towns in Massachusetts have wanted, as Sheila said, to take more, adopt more stringent building codes, requiring more insulation, or two-by-six construction, or more advanced, energy-efficient technologies, but you cannot impose building codes that are different from the state building code, so over the last several months, there's been a process to upgrade and adopt new and improve more environmentally and energy, energy-supportive building codes. Stretch, I can't remember if it's an acronym or not, what they are, so now towns, because the state has them, you have the ability to adopt them, so you can go even further now if you so.
Be more restrictive, right.
And more, and you build a better quality buildings.
Keep them in more.
Increasing the lifecycle cost of the buildings, but prior to that, the town of Falmouth may have wanted to require, you know, certain insulation levels in all residential buildings, but you couldn't, because you couldn't require that you exceed the state building code.
Right.
Now, under the stretch code, you have that ability, if you adopt the stretch building code, you can require those standards, you still couldn't go above them, but you still keep, it's a significantly improving, you know, there's two sides to this issue, some say it will, it will make buildings more expensive, but you're getting the lifecycle cost, because they'll be more efficient, and the actual operation of the building should be lower than buildings built under the old code.
Right. The gentleman was there from home, Mr. Berry, do you know, you know him?
Mike Berry?
Mike Berry, yep, and, you know, he spoke very, you know, on behalf of Cape Light Compact in on his program, and how those programs are there to help builders, you know, and there's some, there's some codes that are built in for the builders in rebates that, that will take place if the builders use them, and then there are some for homeowners if they use them, and that all happens on either the new construction phase or the remodeling phase, so there was, it was a very interesting discussion, and it was, it was a good opportunity to see how there were a lot of people in the building trades, in the trades per se, that were aware of the Cape Cod Commission's, you know, regional policy plan, the regional policy plan of the county, and actually was very, you know, were very favorable towards it, so that was good feedback, but it was also interesting to, to attend this, and Ian Finlayson is the gentleman who did the talk, and he's a very, very bright guy, very nice guy. So that was interesting, and that's, and that brings us back to like the workforce discussion yesterday with Mr. Taylor, and he was asking for people's opinions, and, you know, where they should go, and I do, the thing that I, that I, that I thought was interesting is how he was saying there's all this data that is collected and not disseminated, I mean, the state has tons and tons and tons and tons of data, and it is not looked at, and it's not analyzed, it's just sitting there, and, and therefore, there is not really a coordinated effort across the state to, you know, to implement any real effective economic development, and I think that today, later on today, when you hear about the SIDS and, and what the county is doing, he was actually, I thought, impressed by the rollout of, you know, from what he had heard on the SIDS, because that is basically what the attempt is, is to collect this data, and not just let it say, well, look, isn't that kind of interesting, but go beyond that, analyze it, and then do something with that analysis, and come up with an implementation, which is where I think the EDC feels that they are.
I might add that David Argosino did point out that the Workforce Investment Board is, is paying for its own data collection.
Yes, exactly.
And that, even, even with paying for it, our data is lagging about six months from the present date.
To a year, right.
The state's data is essentially a transfer of the federal data, and it's now up to 2007, I think.
Right.
So 2000, as David said yesterday, 2007 data does not have, help us make judgments, since we've gone from unemployment of 4.8% to, I think statewide, 9. something percent, and on the Cape based upon the paper this morning, it was 7.7%, so having, having an obituary about something that happened a couple of years ago doesn't really help us with informed judgments as to how to, to direct things, especially given the volatile climate of economic issues that we're facing right now, so. Given the data, the next question comes up, which I didn't hear from, from Mr. Taylor, was, does, other than doing listening and saying, yeah, gee, we really got a problem, is there any assets or resources that the state is going to buy to this, or we're going to put this all in a data collection box where, when we finally see some money, we'll, we'll know what to do?
I don't know the answer to that question.
And again, this is a, this is a continual question, you know, it's, we just, everything we have a problem.
Well, the fact is, we know that we have no, we have no, we have no money, and, you know, a lot of things are, are happening, and, and I think that they're very good initiatives, even the stretch codes and the ability for towns to be able to do certain things, you know, how well it's going to be implemented, how thoroughly and how quickly is, is going to be, remain to be seen, so, but, you know, they're out there, and eventually, hopefully all of this will, you know, many of the good things will be put into place, so lots of interesting stuff.
Now, I have, I might mention something else, I've gotten calls from several of fire chiefs over the past several weeks, and they have asked for, audience, I guess, we'll put it, to talk about their concern about the ongoing issues with regard to the transfer of CMEs.
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 And then whether or not that will affect the, let's see, the, the other 911 joint dispatch issues, and I had suggested that, that we would agree to invite them in so that we could all talk to them. Offline, Pat had suggested that after we talked to the fire chiefs, that at some point we ought to engage all of the other actors in this, and, but.
I think we said that at the last meeting, did we not?
Well, you know, Mark Foley is on the retirement board with us, and he's very much involved in this.
He's also the assistant director at the Fire Training.
That's right.
Deputy chief of Eastham.
Right, exactly, and, and so he's been keeping me informed from his perspective, and I know that Cape Cod Healthcare has provided the funding to make this possible until October, but come October, there is nothing in place that will take the place of it if the sheriff, it cuts us out, and obviously, he's going to do that, so that's why I suggested that after we hear from the fire chief, that we should get a group together.
Exactly.
And see if we can work.
I'm going to suggest that.
You're not going to suggest that.
We flipped that order, yeah, no, but we don't have the agenda, we don't have the fire chiefs on the agenda, and our agenda is pretty much loaded until August, I would flip the order of that and pull that.
Get some people together.
Yeah, as soon as possible, here's why, you know, the sheriff's bill, the takeover bill, there's no alternative in there right now to all of that functioning going to the state.
That's right.
But it came to me that they're actually looking into, the legislature is looking into, and I can't, I can't tell you.
Yes.
They're looking into, they're looking into writing, writing a passage in that we're the responsibility, because it was something that was overlooked in the health care.
This is my understanding, Sheila, of what the legislature's looking at, the ability to charge on your insurance.
Yes, back to the insurance.
The cost of the communication piece.
Right, exactly.
Which would work fine, it's not an issue, but.
But we, but we shouldn't just let it happen.
Right.
I think we need to play a part here.
And I think we said that to the last meeting.
Because the CMEs thing is just the tip of the iceberg, what's happened is now the sheriffs are concerned in the future about the whole 911 dispatch piece.
Well, why don't we, so I think maybe we don't necessarily have to do it in our regular meeting, I mean, we could, we should do it on another day.
Exactly, so similar to how we did the rest of everything.
Where we have an hour or two that we can actually devote to, we can set a date and a time.
Well, we're going to be at the sheriff's facility on the 8th, we are?
That's, that's what we're, I believe it's the 8th, we're scheduled.
We're scheduled to have our meeting at the sheriff's.
We're trying to go to the.
Oh, our regular Wednesday meeting.
Do our inspection.
And we can discuss this with him and get a, and pull some people together, and...
What should I tell the fire chiefs?
That we are going to, yeah, I, I'm, I think they're in talk, I think they're talking to all, I think they're.
Not for this individual.
I don't think we have to wait till the 8th.
No, we don't.
To get started on, I think we need to identify who we want here, we need somebody from Cape Cod Healthcare, because they represent both hospitals on the Cape.
Well, that would be.
Whoever that might be, it's up to the hospital to decide who they want to send, but I think if we, if we look at who we need to be here, obviously, the sheriff or somebody from his department.
And represent.
Somebody who represents the fire chiefs and the county, aren't they organized similar to the.
Yes, they are, Fire Chiefs Association.
Right, so they have an association, I'm not Ed.
I think you'd probably want to invite staff from Senator O'Leary and Senator Perry's office, I know they were involved in a previous meeting.
That's right, and Cleon Turner has been very aware of this, and.
Legislative staff.
Yeah, the legislative staff.
Okay.
Okay, so what is the next step?
So that we will be contacting them to get a date and a time.
Well, we need to set a date.
We'll get Mark.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try, we'll try.
And Mark.
Next week or so.
Okay, Roy Jones was, Roy Jones from Bristol was the one specifically who was in touch with you.
And Mark Foley.
Yes, and Chief Frank, or don't forget, he's very.
I like Mark Foley to pull together whatever fire people he wants, you know, it's up to them to figure out who they want to be.
Right, okay.
And that's, that's good, because I think, I think we, you know, as a county, obviously, we want.
We used to do this like next Monday or Tuesday, I think.
Something like that, yeah.
And the gentleman who, it's Van, it's Wendy Northcross.
Van Northcross.
Yes, okay.
And who's?
I wasn't sure if she.
He's the vice president, he's at Cape Cod.
Right, for public relations, and he, so you can call him, and if he wants to be the person, or.
Or a finance person, you never know.
Yes, so, how are you?
Good, has Paul presented yet, or is he?
Not yet, he will be at 10, so 10 more minutes.
Great, I'll be back.
Okay, great, thanks, so.
Well, good.
Yeah, that would take a.
Well, while we're talking about things.
That's just festering out there, and it's really, everybody, everybody's doing their own little thing, but it's not coming together.
Yeah, let's bring it together.
I think we, you know, we have some credibility because of the REPC business, and I guess what they're, what, the impression I got from Chief Jones was that we have a reputation for pulling things together.
Absolutely, that's what we do.
And he looks at us as being somebody that, you know, that could sort of, if not solve it, at least move us in the direction of a solution.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just suggest, Sheila had mentioned two other things that are kind of out there that we need to figure out, some discussion about, and that's Open Cape and Cape Care, and.
Yes.
We're trying to schedule those for future meetings as well, I believe we have Open Cape coming in on July 1st.
On July 1st.
I have a question on July 1st.
I haven't heard back from Dan.
I was told by, by my housing director last night that their schedule coming at 3:00 on July 1st.
That's the other thing, Sandra Perry had sent us a letter, asking that they come in on July 1st to talk about kind of the regionalization of housing authorities, and I called Sandra back, and she's, is okay for 3:00 on July 1st.
If I, I think I mentioned to you that I received a call or two, there is a group of housing authority, another association, I guess, of housing authority directors.
Yeah, the housing, sorry, Directors Association.
Association, and in the last discussion, a few people called me to, to let me know that there was this conversation of fear that the county is taking over housing authorities, and we're going to have our own regional housing authority, and I, I reassured them that this was something that, that maybe Commissioner Doherty might be speaking of quite a bit, it's not something that we wouldn't look at if it was requested, and indeed, it was requested to be looked at by the lower Cape towns of Eastham and Orleans, so there was a grant out of those, the grants that we wanted to match to do regional efforts, to study the issue, to see if it's a feasible issue, what are the benefits and downsides of regionalizing housing authorities, and, and that's, that's where that came from, so we will look at that study and see where we can assist those towns that choose to do such a thing if they indeed do from the results of this study. I, I do know that more gets done when towns collaborate, you've said that many a time.
Yes, I have, and I'm, and I'm pointing out that there, the concern that was expressed to anybody, you know, Bell Foster last night. the concern that was expressed to anybody, you know, Bell Foster last night, was that if we're doing this big study, why didn't we contact the directors to tell them what we were doing, or ask them, or say, or engage them in some way, perhaps not involve them, but engage them? And I wonder, since we, since, I thought we got money from the state specifically to look at this.
We did.
I wonder why the Cape Cod Commission housing person didn't contact the directors of these hous, of these housing authorities in order to make them aware that we were looking at it, rather than just doing the study by himself?
I, the Cape Cod Commission is not doing the study, the town of Eastham is doing the study. They are the ones that requested the funds. So the study is being done by those towns. Those, those were, those monies were being distributed by, they were the pass, the Cape Cod Commission was only the pass-through.
I see, is this the one that does Sheila?
Sheila Vandahoe requested it.
Yeah, I think we talked about that last time.
And, yes, so that was not, that's the whole misconception of this whole effort.
This is what's happened, Bill, is there's a fairly narrow study going on on the lower Cape. And what's happened is it's just similar to when I did the whole regionalization report four years ago, whenever it was, I can't even remember. And on that list was the assessing service, which is on the table again. And of course, not 10 minutes after that report was publicly released, I get a call from the Assessors Association wanting to come in and meet with you and say, find out what you guys, you know, you're taking over all of a sudden. So that's, that's what's going on here.
That's exactly...
So I think it's a good idea, they come in, 3 o'clock, we talk, I think it's a good opportunity to kind of open them.
To even open the discussion and for them to even be thinking about it, and what is it that they're going to gain or lose if they even think about it? And, you know, what are the good sides? I mean, if we really do want to create housing, does it matter what, if it's more effective to have a regional structure, isn't that the goal? Or is it really just to have our own individual...
I have a waiting list of, I did have a waiting list of 300, you know, in Howard, which has about 11,000, 12,000 people. And I don't know what the size of the waiting list is in Falmouth. I believe that the Falmouth director is one of the people that, you know, the one that succeeded Bob Murray is one of the people that is coming forward on this. But the whole point is that if we know that we have a significant problem of production, and we know that we have a, an issue with maintaining the, what, the, was it, both the accountability and the administration of programs, if we can reduce the administrative burden, and this is my mantra, we can free up the talent of those people who are interested in developing housing. So if anybody comes in and says that they don't have any waiting list, and clearly, you know, there's not an issue, but if they have a waiting list, the question is, how do you propose to meet what has been the continuing cry from the federal government about, we're supposed to stop managing this problem, we're supposed to end this problem?
Right, okay. Well said, and we will, we will meet with Sandra and whoever else chooses to come on that.
I have two votes, if we could, before 10 o'clock that we could do. I need to, as you know, the Assembly is starting the charter process, we had some exchanges on that, I think Diane sent a very detailed... What we need you guys to do is vote to appoint a charter committee representative of commissioners.
A charter committee?
Representative from...
Oh, a representative of commissioners to the charter committee.
As part of the charter committee that the Assembly puts together, they have a commissioner representative.
We have an interesting dynamic here. We have completely naive, recently, you've never been involved with the charter.
Oh, I have, oh, absolutely. The county charter?
I take exception to that.
They help you extract your size 11.
No, actually, John Ryan.
That's a subjective opinion.
No, he doesn't know that I worked with the previous charter committee when Tom Bernardo was the chair.
Of course he did, why did I forget that? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I think you should temper your...
What?
Yes, so do we want to think about this and see who will...
I'll think about it by the end of the meeting, and, and bring it up at the very end and say who wants to.
That's okay, you guys need to work that out. And I also need a vote, as you know, we have leased the former doctor's residence that was vacant for a long, long, long time to a consortium, the Bourne Historical Society.
Fresh shop.
Yeah, they're going to do the fresh shop. They have gone to the Bourne Planning Board and secured a special permit to improve their parking situation over there. They went over to the Registry of Beads to record that special permit. And unfortunately, because it's a land court facility, we need to have you folks assent to the special permit. Jack Mead is looking for a vote, so if I could have you vote to assent to the special permit for, and this is his wording, property owned by the county municipal located in 892 County Road, Warren, Mass., being Lot 8 on Land Court Plan 24204D, certificate of title number This is for Bourne Planning Board Special Permit 092009. So if I could have you move...
I'll move that language.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. Maggie, do you have anything before we...
I have some personal issues, but I don't think we'll have time to get them before we...
Okay, so we can go into executive session afterwards.
Okay, do you guys want to, if you have any issues on the votes?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, why don't we do this vote?
I am not...
Do you have any questions on that?
Well, items 21, 24, 25, 26, 27, 29, and 30, and they all deal with agreements with the sheriff. And I guess my question is, I don't know what the length of these agreements are, but if the state were to take over the sheriff, would they have any impact?
Well, we're in a bit of a catch 22.
Right, I know that.
Because we're coming, and I'm in the same situation with some workers' comp stuff. And what will happen is any contracts that are valid contracts in place at the time of the takeover are in effect after the takeover, that's what the legislation specifies.
Oh, so...
So we don't want to get stuck on July 1st not having contracts for, because the rumors, and these are strictly rumors that we're hearing, are that this is probably not going to happen until January 1st, 2010.
But if these...
That's the rumor I'm hearing.
If these were in effect, and these are funded, are they funded by the sheriff?
They're probably annual contracts.
Definitely not that.
If they're funded by the sheriff, out of his budget.
So they're not out of county funds?
Not out of county funds.
What the sheriff said to me yesterday was, he was going to approach you about setting up different accounts that would be in place so that when we, when he did transition to the state, and supposedly there's a vote this coming Thursday, that, you know, there'd be a mechanism in place for these transfers to occur.
Yeah, I don't need special accounts for that, but I think we're all set for any transfers to occur. I mean, what will happen is we'll cease to pay and the state will start to pay, that's pretty much, you know, what will happen.
The other question I have is, item number 33, this has to do with the EDC and the license plate funds.
This is actually...
Do we want to vote this now, or do we want to vote it when they come in and make their presentation?
You could do that, you could hold that.
Yeah, we hold that because we do want to hear the presentation.
Hold 33 until after we hear the presentation from the EDC.
Yes, so we will...
So I would move items 1 through 37 with the exception of 33.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, we'll come back to that. All right, why don't we take a three-minute recess in case anybody has to...
Sure, we're still waiting for Paul anyway.
Stretch their legs. That's a nice way of saying it.